This meeting of the Haltum City Council is called to order. If you will, stand at this time for the invocation and pledge led by Councilmember Jim Sutton.
Thank you, let's bow our heads. Thank you Father for the privilege of meeting together in a free government and deliberating on issues tonight. I just pray your blessing upon the things tonight. I thank you for each person that's here. I thank you for the families and individuals, businesses of Haltum City. I pray your blessing upon them. Here we are in a new year, Lord, and I thank you for the gift of life that we have. And I pray that we be able to use that energy and that passion for things that honor and glorify your name. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will be joined shortly by the city manager and I think Councilmember Fowler. We'll go ahead and move forward at this time. I want to begin by saying welcome to all of you who are in the audience tonight. This is the first council meeting of 2004. And also to those who are watching on HCTV. We're always glad to have our citizens interested in what's going on in Haltum City and either attending council meetings or watching by way of cable TV. The first item we have on the agenda tonight is a presentation by our Director of Information, Fran Burns, having to do with holiday decorating winners. Ms. Burns, if you would.
Thank you Mayor, and city council members, and members of the audience. We're here tonight to recognize some folks that helped make the city beautiful for the holidays. And in a second, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mary Spencer. She's one of our board members who was the chairman of that particular event, and she's going to be handing out the certificates. But while I have the podium, I would like to also thank the entire board for their sponsorship of all the Christmas events that we have every year. And if you'll allow me to, I'd like to go ahead and name Birdie Blocker. She's the chairman of the Tour of Lights program. The tree lighting is chaired by Denise Ford and Diane McGee. And then the rest of the board members who turn out to help for all these events are Betty Porter, the chairman of our board, Wayne Clowers, who this year played Santa Claus and did a very good job, C.C. Oaks, and Don Weldon. And they're all volunteers and they put in countless hours this season to help celebrate the holidays here in Haltum City. And with that, I'd like to turn the podium over to Mary.
We would like to recognize the winners of the Neighborhood Decorating Contest, and the city's divided into six sections, and we choose three winners from each section. And before we hand out the certificates, I'd like to give a special thanks to Alan Roberts, the principal at Haltum High School, Laura Myers, the sponsor of StuCo, Ms. Cook, the National Honor Society sponsor, and all the students who judged the contest. This year, students did all of the work for me, and I appreciate that. And I'm going to start with Section 1, which is south of Midway and northeast 28th Street. Most creative went to Frank Fernandez. Best use of lights, Linda Western. Best theme, Geneva Zapata. And Section 2, which is north of Midway and south of Broadway, most creative was Deborah McConnell. Best theme, Susan Bell. Section 3 is north of Midway and south of 820. Most creative went to Joyce Childers. Best use of lights, Charles Burgess. And best theme, George Barnes. Section 4, which is north of 820 and south of Western Center, west of Denton Highway. Most creative, J.C. and Kathy Harris. Best use of lights, James and Sandra Hunter. Best use of a theme, Kelly Stimson. Section 5 is east of Denton Highway and all of Diamond Oaks, north to Loop 820. Most creative, Clyde Springers. Best use of lights, Paletta Johnson. Best theme, Charles Spalding. Excuse me? Somebody's there? Sorry, we went too fast. Section 6, north of Loop 820, east of Denton Highway. Most creative, to Mr. and Mrs. Gary Marsden. Best use of lights, Mr. and Mrs. Delarosa. Not going to try that person. And best theme, Mr. and Ms. Steve LaFune. Okay, and we would like for the winners to join us in the hall for cake and punch and pictures.
If you would, ladies and gentlemen, let's give a round of applause to all of these Thank you, ladies, for bringing the information and making the presentations. And our thanks to all of our citizens in Haltum City. You sure did make Haltum City look pretty with all the lights. And we want you to know, we really do appreciate that. I know it takes a lot of time and effort to do what you did, and we do thank you very much. I failed to mention when I welcomed everyone a moment ago. I see we have a couple of Boy Scouts in the audience tonight. And most of the time, when they're here, it's to observe local city government in action. They're working on some of their merit badges. And both of you gentlemen who are here tonight, welcome to Haltum City and to the council We move on at this time to our announcements. Ms. Staub, I believe you have an announcement regarding an election coming up.
Yes, I do want to remind everyone, early voting for this special election for February 7th starts January 21st. It'll be January 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 8 to 5, 26th, 27th, 28th, 29th, 30th, and 31st. And the 31st is Saturday. That's going to be a special Saturday, 9 to 4, and then all the way through February 3rd. Early voting is here at City Hall in the pre-council chambers. The doors will be marked where to go and vote. And then, of course, the election day voting will be at two different locations. We'll have one here at City Hall and also at John Spicer Elementary. Notices have been published in the Fort Worth Star-Telegram. Notice is on our website. If you don't know what precinct, where to vote, it's on our website. It's posted outside, and if you have any questions or need anything, you can give me a call at 817-222-7749.
Thank you Brenda. Coming from the library, we have some information regarding some good things going on in our library. Our director, Leslie Smith.
Thank you. I wanted to let everyone know, excuse me, about the new bookshelves that we've installed. This happened during Christmas time while you kids were all eating turkey. We, the library staff, were hard at work putting up the new bookshelves. That was a joke. Thank you, Ray. I wanted to thank, first off, Colleen Elliott, President of our Friends Group, for donating $500 to rent the book trucks, which came in very, very handy. Also, a thank you to the Parks Department and to the Public Works Department for giving us additional manpower, which was very, very helpful. Also, I wanted to thank our former library director, Rodney Bland, who came out and helped us there. And I want to thank the library staff, and especially Grant Vaden, who meticulously coordinated this project. And without his help, we would not have been able to get this done, I assure you. And thank you goes to all the people who donated money to the library donation fund. Because of those donations, we were able to purchase these new shelves, and the new shelves will be following us into the new building, into the new library facility. This cost approximately $28,000 total, and we wanted to thank everyone for helping us with that, and everything looks real nice out there. Please come and see us. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. A lot of hard work over the holidays, and I haven't been down yet, but I want to come down and see what you did.
Please do.
Thank you very much. And let's call Fran Burns back up at this time. I believe she has two announcements important to the citizens of Haltum City.
I do. I want to remind everybody that the Images of Haltum City photo contest deadline is coming up. It's January the 30th. That's a Friday. Anybody can enter. You can be an employee or not employee. You can be a pro or amateur. There are four categories that you can enter your photographs in. There's no entry fee, and there's prize money of $175 for the photo chosen as the best of Haltum City. And the photos will be published in the next year's community calendar, which leads me to my next announcement. The community calendars are out. And last year, where we mailed them to the residents, we're just handing them out to save a little bit of money. And they're hopefully useful to everyone. They've got information inside as to what happens when, and then information about some of our new facilities that are coming online. So it's pretty exciting and shows how progressive we're being here in Haltum City. So if you need a copy, they're available here at City Hall, at the library, the Senior Center has them, and also the Law Enforcement Center. Or you can call me at City Hall. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. Members of the council, any questions or comments about any of the announcements, particularly these that France has just made? Councilmember Henderson? Your light came on. Okay, John. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you. First, I'd like to compliment you on the calendar. It turned out very well. I didn't think last year's could be beat, but it's much nicer this year. And also, I want to thank you and Mary and everybody on the beautification board that was taking place. I know a lot of ours went into the Christmas deal. Christmas lighting, dickens on Christmas and all that. And I want to thank you for your dedication to the city.
And might I say that this year, when we put the calendar together, we had a committee of employees that actually sat and looked at the first one that we did last year and tried to come up with some improvements. And Leslie Smith was on our committee, as well as Donna Bernard and David Soriano. So I thank them very much.
Ms. Burns, I have the habit of always looking at the next item on the agenda. And while you were talking a moment ago, did you tell our citizens, and particularly the people here tonight, how they can get a copy of that? If you did say that, I apologize for asking you to repeat it.
That's okay. Most municipal buildings, City Hall, the library, the Law Enforcement Center, and the Senior Center. And they're free.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And if you have printed agenda before you, that consists of items number 1 through 8. These are considered to be self-explanatory and will be enacted by the council with one motion. And approval by the council of this consent agenda authorizes the city manager to implement each item in accordance with staff or board recommendations. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I guess I might have not hit my button a minute ago. I just wanted to make a comment on the announcements portion. I was going to take a minute to thank our staff, not only our management, but the department heads, and ask you all to compliment our employees on... That's about the third comment I've heard about how we've had shared between departments' employees and a spirit of working together and helping each other out. And I want to appreciate you bringing that to our attention, Ms. Smith. But that's about the third time I've heard a comment on that in the last month. So I just want to thank Mr. Muir and the rest of the staff, and ask you all, department heads, to tell them thanks for all their hard work.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Now, back to the consent agenda items, 1 through 8. I'm ready to receive a motion regarding the consent agenda. Councilmember Sutton?
Recommend approval of the consent agenda.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Councilmember Branson?
I'll second that.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. If you'll register your votes, I'll display them at this time. That passes by unanimous vote. We move now to item number 9, which has to do with taking a look at our thoroughfare plan and considering the possibility of amending that. Acting City Manager Tom Muir, would you like to introduce that at this time, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, 9 and 10 are closely related. Item 9, I'm presenting for the council's consideration and approval, revising the city thoroughfare plan. This is in conjunction with a home development proposed by KB Home. It would have about 115 homes in the development. The revision would be required to reduce the roadway from, I believe, a 100-foot collector to a 60-foot arterial. The consideration of the thoroughfare, the change of the thoroughfare plan, and again, is in conjunction with the preliminary plat that's in item 10. This has been approved by the P&amp;Z. Mr. Bennett Howell can probably address any questions, at least from a planning standpoint, that may have been addressed with the P&amp;Z. But the issue was talked about considerably in pre-council, as far as the need for the revision. And I think some of the council members have some concerns regarding it. But the staff has met with KB, and they've presented this plan. Just to give a brief, trying to make it brief, I'll do the best I can making it brief. The history on this thing... Oh, I thought you were talking to me. I'm sorry. In the zoning, when it was originally rezoned a couple of months ago, the staff and I think the council voiced their concerns regarding the issues with thoroughfare plan and the roadway. The zoning was approved. And that's also at the same time, the staff voiced some concerns, although possibly last minute, regarding the site plan and development of the property concerning the issues from an economic development standpoint. And the fiduciary responsibility that we have with the EDC and the development along 820 and some of the other issues that we have there. A plan was presented to KB without KB's, admittedly without KB's input, but with the intent of trying to come up with a plan revision that got them the same yield, although it may be certainly different in scope. KB's seen that, this was supposed to be presented to you at the last council meeting, actually, on December 15th. KB asked to table it to get with the staff and a few of the council members individually to discuss it. And I believe they've done that, they've chose not to converse anymore with the staff, which is fine. But the plan, they've looked at the plan, they felt the plan did not fit their need for what they were hoping to get out of it. The plan that they've presented to you, and I don't mean to jump ahead into item 10, but it does affect item 9, that the plan that they presented was prior approval with the P&amp;Z, working with the staff, and that certainly did happen. And this was mainly brought at my request to, at least for KB, to consider an alternate plan that would hopefully meet with some of the goals we were getting with EDC. I think KB respectfully just wants to go ahead and proceed with their plan because of the investments that they've got in it, and I certainly understand that. And I can appreciate that. But what you have before you, and I'm presenting it for your consideration and approval, is revising the thoroughfare plan as they've presented it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Muir. This is a public hearing, and before I open the public hearing, members of the council, any questions for Mr. Muir, or any of the comments he made just now in his presentation? Okay, there being none, I'll open the public hearing at this time and allow anyone in the audience who wishes to address the matter of amending the Haltum City thoroughfare plan that was adopted in 2002 and the major thoroughfare plan map to reflect the functional classification change for West Grove Road from a proposed minor arterial to a proposed 60-foot right-of-way collector. We are not required for you on a public hearing to fill out one of these request cards. However, two individuals have filled those out, and I'll call on them first, but any member of the audience who wishes will have an opportunity to provide input into this public hearing to amend the city thoroughfare plan. The first that was handed to me by the city secretary, Mr. Stephen McGee, with KB Homes. And if you would, Mr. McGee, we need your name and address for the record. And I want to remind you that we're talking at this point only about item 9, and I know item 9 and 10 kind of go together, but if you could, let's focus on the amendment to the thoroughfare plan, and then we'll get to item 10, which has to do with your application when we come to item number 10.
Happy to try and do that, Mayor.
And you have five minutes.
If I don't break your microphone. Five minutes, yeah, that's what I wanted to know whether I was being timed or not. Good evening, members of council. Mayor White, my name is Steve McGee. I'm the Director of Land Acquisition for KB Home Dallas/Fort Worth. We have been working on a project for approximately six months. I know the council's aware of it, just to make the members of the audience aware of it. We processed a rezoning with you through your Planning and Zoning Commission and ultimately the council. We processed a preliminary plat through the Planning and Zoning Commission. And what you have before you this evening on item 9 is what I guess has been determined a necessary amendment to the thoroughfare plan to comport with the zoning we've had approved, along with later on item 10, our plat. So there's a couple of items I just want to speak to on item 9. We have met with staff numerous times in the development of this land plan, which was the plan that was approved by the P&amp;Z. We submitted at the request of the city, we ended up submitting five land plans to the staff, and actually asked the city what would they prefer to be the land plan for our project. We're down zoning, changing apartment zoning to single-family zoning at this location. The major issue that came up in our early staff discussion was whether or not we made a vehicular connection by a road, the West Grove, the ultimate West Grove, that would run right through the center or off to the side and then through the center of the site, whether that should or would connect to Loop Road 820. We were very clear in the beginning and the first part of the development of this project that we could not have market a single-family home development of 115 lots if we needed to provide a cut-through street. There weren't many people we knew of would want to buy a home and have the traffic running right through the middle where their kids are playing in the front yard. The compromise we ultimately reached, and at one point, I'll just add, at one point, we had actually informed Mr. Muir that we were going to push away from the project if we couldn't reach an agreement where we would have at least some limited or emergency access only through this connection that would ultimately be to 820. That was the compromise we seem to have reached. We processed our plan through the P&amp;Z. There was no comment given at any public meeting that I'm aware of by any staff member of Haltum City that contravened the plan that was ultimately approved. Now, we're here, and again, the purpose of this item, as I understand it, is to formally modify the thoroughfare plan in conformance with the zoning that is already approved for the property. It's zoned PD residential. This modification of thoroughfare plan would allow this project to move forward. The next item, again, is the plat, but I want to emphasize that at no time during this process and in our discussions with the city, at no time and at no public hearing, and I attended all of them related to this, were there any comments made by staff members of the city or was KB informed that there was a concern that went beyond the scope of this plan? We were not given input into the development of the "alternative" plan that has been tossed around for this property. And probably we would have, and I was asked in executives or in the pre-meeting, would you work with the city staff and would you develop an alternative plan? And gosh, we'd be happy to do that. We felt like we did. We did five plans and submitted them and left the decision on the city. It's that we're late in the game. This project, from KB's standpoint, has been formally approved by our corporation in Los Angeles. It would be very difficult for us to come back now and change the plan. And the other issue we have is that we want to build a quality community. And to build a quality community requires good land planning. And if we build the plan that, as I saw and reviewed, we would be, I think, criticized, that we built a plan that's really not assailable. And we do have these other issues related to this property. On one side is an apartment complex. On the other side is a railroad track. If we have a through-street running straight through the middle of the property, it just won't work for single-family development.
Mr. McGee, you have about 30 seconds on your presentation. There may be questions from the council regarding the thoroughfare plan in just a moment.
I'll wrap it up. Mr. Mayor, then, I guess we hope that you'll support our request. And we feel as if we've, in good faith, brought a plan forward that we'd like to see approved, that we think works for Haltum City. We think it's a more preferable residential development than high-density apartment zoning on this property. Thank you.
If you would remain at your position, council members may have questions or comments. Councilmember Fowler, I believe, has the first.
Mr. McGee, you said that at all the meetings that you attended, there was no indication that anything would be done different from the plan that's presented tonight?
That's correct, Councilman Fowler. That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Now, there was a meeting that I wasn't aware of that took place between the Planning and Zoning Director, the Mayor, and who else was involved in that meeting? Yourself?
I was not involved in that meeting. While I, like Mayor White, I don't think we've ever met on this particular project.
Was, and I guess I'm confused, because in pre-council, it was stated that there were four people at a meeting. Is that correct, Mayor?
I don't remember what was stated. The meeting I attended, it was myself and Mr. Plisca, and it may have been the city engineer, I don't recall. And they had the five different plans, and they said of these five, which do you like? And all of them showed the cul-de-sac down at the end on the front of the road, just like that. And by no means did I approve anything, did I give anything. I simply said, I like this one better than the others, just the way it was laid out after driving around up there and looking at that.
Was there a KB representative there at that meeting?
I don't recall.
No, there was not. I know there was not.
But this is the plan that was brought back to you, that came from that meeting out of the five?
The input after that came from your planning director, James Plisca, who said, "The preference seems to be among the Planning and Zoning Commission and whoever else he'd shown it to to bring forward this plan."
Let me clear something. Me, I don't want to have a whole lot of weight to the meeting with the mayor. That meeting apparently just confirmed, I think, the selection of that plan. It's fair to say that between the staff and KB, even It's fair to say that between the staff and KB, even before this parent meeting with the mayor, that plan was selected by management, by the planning director, that was the preferable plan.
Well, that's what I'm saying, though. This is out of the five plans from staff's standpoint and from the meeting that the mayor had and all. Is this the same plan that you all looked at, Mayor?
This is one of five.
But is this the one that you all felt like was the preference of the?
Well, I don't know about all. I just simply expressed my comments that of the five, this one looked like the best of the five.
Okay.
And I didn't, beyond that, I made no further comment.
Okay.
Councilman Fowler, if I can just elaborate on that. You know, we were not intending and by no means wanted to bind anybody to a particular plan. At the time we presented the five plans, they were all conceptual, and what we were trying to do is cooperate and give the staff and the city as much input as possible into the development of a plan for this site, given a number of things we discussed, including the through-street. So at the time, I think, when I got some feedback from both Mr. Muir and Mr. Plisca, the idea was we would include this plan in our proposed rezoning and go forward. If the plan was modified by the P and Z members or the council based on other comments and so forth, so be it, but that was the plan we included in the rezoning.
But you all provided that site plan during the rezoning process?
Yes, we did. I was holding it right here. This is the same one.
So it hasn't deviated at all since evidently you all presented the five plans to, at that meeting that I wasn't aware of?
That's correct. Hasn't deviated one bit.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
I've got a couple of questions. One, and I kind of touched on this in pre-council. The mayor and the engineer, was the engineer the, was it Mr. Bennett or Mr. Van Oen-Hughes? Do y'all know? Mr. Van Oen-Hughes was there. Y'all submitted, y'all drew up five plans. That's five times the cost.
That's correct.
That had right brought to it. And then we took the mayor and the engineer, and who else was it? The planning director? And those three selected what they thought would be the best plan for this?
I don't know that they, the plans were all similar, Councilmen. What they, what we asked for was some input on, primarily at that time, the concurrence of the group was that we would cul-de-sac here, and the input had to be with lot layouts. So they didn't, they deviated some from each other, but they didn't deviate a lot. They were all very similar. So I don't, you know, to state that one was selected over another, there were just some design preferences in the one or the other. What we did do, however, though, is once we got some feedback that this, we liked this plan from a corporate standpoint, we thought it made sense, had a lot of open space in the front, some parks, separated the railroad track from some of our lots. So we relied on this plan and drew all our drawings. And so we have expended a fair amount of money, not just on developing five plans, but once we rezoned this property based on this plan, we started preparing engineering drawings, we've got a plat, we've, you know, we relied on that, so.
Go ahead. I just wanted to restate something. I don't want there to be a misconception that that meeting with the mayor and the planning director and the engineer, that was the one meeting that they selected this site plan.
Exactly. No way.
That was not the case.
Well, my next question would be, were all five of these plans submitted to the Planning and Zoning Board?
I don't believe. I don't know.
Do you know how many were, Ms. Brant?
Yeah, I think they were submitted for the DRC, which I guess is a staff review, but not formally. In our application to the board, they were not.
The P and Z only saw, I believe, that plan.
I think from a management standpoint, I mean, the prior management, Mr. Torres, Mr. Plisca, they expressed preference for that site plan. They had a consequent meeting, I guess, with the mayor looking for, I guess, his thoughts or just input or whatnot, but I don't believe that that meeting was the end-all. This is, this is the plan. And kind of changing gears here a little bit, I mean, the, as I stated in my presentation there was that I gave, the alternate plan that we've came up with does not have the, you know, the thoroughfare, the road coming right through the middle of it, as you were describing. It goes to the west along the railroad track. It does not go through the middle of it. And I was wanting to kind of clarify something there, because I don't think a lot of people have seen that thing outside of myself and Mr. McGee and some of the other folks that were involved in the development of that. So it's, and it's, again, I presented that alternative just to try to work with KB and coming up with something, albeit admittedly late in the process. What Mr. McGee stated there as far as working with staff and going through the P and Z is accurate. I don't have an argument with that. But I was hoping to be able to work with KB and trying to come up with an alternate plan that while we were changing, I guess, changing our minds, changing whatever, that we could work with them in doing that. They have consequently, respectfully, said that is nothing that they want to consider or entertain. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement. I think, not to interrupt you, I think that our problem is we don't feel like we can consider that in the form it's been presented to us, because we have a big concern about putting a community down here that has a little better level of quality than just a straight subdivision. I think we stated before that the homes we intend to sell here are move-up homes, not the basic sort of first-time home buyers. So we spent money on land planning to try and develop a plan that we felt would market real well to a little more of an upscale community.
I guess my concern is that I wasn't aware of this meeting. I think from the faces of some of the council members and pre-council, they weren't aware of it either. And I think something of this magnitude for a two or three people in the city and leave the planning and zoning people completely out of the process, which that is their, that's their baby. They make their recommendations and bring them to us, and I would like them to have the opportunity to look at all five plans. Now, I have had the opportunity to look at the alternate plan that Kent Flynn had. He may want to touch on that in a second. But the alternate plan that he has, Mr. Flynn tells me the amount of homes in that plan are equal to the amount of homes. I know you're going to try to cut me off here, but I won't.
I'm not going to touch. I'm not going to cut you off.
It's going to be about the same amount of homes here, but the plan that Mr. Flynn showed me compared to the plan you got is a lot more, for lack of a better word, choppier in the roads. I'm looking at three major roads. If you'll raise that back up, I'm looking at three major roads with a cross street in it, and one of the three major roads cuts from one to the other. And the one that Mr. Flynn has, looks like it may have a couple of more roads through there, plus it moves the main road over to the railroad track. I think the four houses on the railroad track in that plan there is a bad idea. We discussed that earlier, and you said those would be the cheaper. We've got people that live a half a mile from railroad track that complain about it, and that's going to be a stone's throw. But I guess my question I'll ask you here, I ask you back there, if we stick to wanting you to change an alternate plan or ask you to work maybe with an alternate plan on that, would that be a killer on the deal? And what's your timeframe you're looking at?
Here's my problem, Councilman Williams, and I respectfully want to work with city staff as I responded in the session back there. The problem we have is, and the one thing I guess I would disagree with you in your response here to me, is that we did go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We did go to the public hearings, and the city, we went to the city council. And at each one, I think, at least at the city council, the mayor announced a public hearing, and at the P and Z, we had a public hearing, and there was all kinds of time to have input into the plan that was ultimately incorporated into the approved zoning for the property. So what we've got is we're wanting to discuss land use and planned issues that we normally bring up during a zoning hearing that's passed. It's, the property's been zoned PD residential. So all we did is we came back and said, well, we want to forward a preliminary plat, and when we brought our plat forward, we were presented with this, well, the thoroughfare plan has to be amended. It was our understanding, the part of the PD plan process, because it's a plan that's specific to the property, actually amended that to that point. But wanting to be cooperative, we said, well, we'll step forward and we'll go through this process as well. The problem we have now is, you know, we're sort of being told, well, go back to the drawing board on the land use issue, and we've been working on this project here with the city now for over six months. So, you know, we would like to accommodate that, but we have concerns about the quality of the communities we put on the ground, and we have concerns about really having some land use issues dictated to us that we didn't really have input in.
The delay of that, with the possibility of increase in interest rates, have a bearing on that as well as sales?
Some, but I think that the worst thing you can do to a developer is to not have certainty in the regulations. We walked in the door here at Haltham City, and we said, well, we want to bring a plan forward. Let's ask you whether or not you would like to rezone what is apartment zoning to single-family. And we asked, and a couple of the first meetings with Greg, I can't think of his name, but you mentioned him, one of you mentioned him, city engineer. He indicated a concern that there would have to be a connecting road that went through here, and frankly, we pushed away and said, well, okay, if we can't do a project here based on that, that's okay. We'll do our project somewhere else. The staff came back to us with, well, let's pursue it a little further. Let's see if we can't come up with a compromise that works. Because back there I heard about, well, can you achieve a compromise? And we felt we did achieve a compromise when we agreed that we would install the culvert crossing that ultimately goes to eight twenty, and we would put emergency access only at this point. The practical effect of that is, we, this will be a public street. We can't control what the city does potentially in the future with this street, but we certainly can't sell a home to a buyer knowing that the minute this is, this gate goes in place, the city will just open it up and allow through traffic through the property. Part of the problem is, and as you know, you know, Haltham City, as much of it is developed out, I don't have to tell you that. You work on these infill decisions all the time, and they're tough, adjacent issues, land use issues. Here you've got a railroad track, you've got a very close parcel line with an existing apartment complex. You've got kind of a long, narrow site, and anywhere you put that through-street, I would submit to you, if it's a through-street and you get through traffic on a twenty-four-and-a-half acre site, it will disrupt what would be a single-family community. We just don't want to be part of, you know, we don't want to try and market something like that. So while I have, want to compromise and work with the staff, I felt like we did that, and then at the very end here at this meeting, this is the first time publicly that this issue has come up.
If you lift that up one more time, I know I'm wearing you out.
No, it's okay.
The four houses, they're adjacent to the railroad track. If those four houses were taken out of the plan, and you come back here on your green belt there that runs into Haltham Road there?
Correct.
Could you run that? And then I guess Kent would have to come up here and look at this too.
Run this down here like this?
Run that road down there like that. Well, Kent, can you come up here and look at what I'm pointing to him? You probably see it better from where you're at anyway. If you came in on that green belt on the, on Haltham Road there, run along the railroad tracks, omitted the four houses up against the railroad track, and Mr. McGee pointed turning that road and going across, could you continue that road straight on across and achieve the same thing?
The difference, if you, go ahead and hold that up, Steve.
While he's coming to the microphone, I want to, for the benefit of particularly people who are watching on TV, this is Kent Flynn, our Economic Development Director, who has a lot of expertise in this area.
Thank you, Mayor. The difference is that the KB plan would still be loaded with single-family lots fronting on this street from the east. Our plan provided a street that had no lots fronting on it, so that there would be no disruption in traffic through the neighborhood. Instead, you had streets looping off of that collector into the subdivision. Now, admittedly, from the design standpoint, from just looking at it two-dimensionally like this, that plan may appear more chopped up. What it really appears, I mean, what really is, it's more rectilinear. This street, I mean, this layout has somewhat curvilinear streets, okay, running through it, and they're long streets. The street that we're talking about, West Grove Boulevard, would actually somewhat function as a collector even if you didn't want it to, because it goes from Haltham Road all the way up to where the frontage road would be if it connected.
But all the houses on the south would be feeding out on the major street?
In this current plan, all the lots would be fronting onto that street.
Right.
And so you'd have people backing into traffic. And admittedly, a single-family development doesn't want that kind of traffic through it. But the alternative plan, and it was just a draft plan submitted to KB to try to work out some solutions, it was nothing in concrete, took the approach of putting that over here on the side so there would be no conflicts with residential people backing out onto it.
It looks to me like you could go down that north side, but I don't know what you would do when you got down to the, instead of making that turn there. I would think it'd be better to go straight on up to where it makes that right, yeah, go right on out there.
The edge of this, this is kind of a wet floodplain area down here, and I think the edge, this is where the closest part where you would naturally cross, this becomes a much wider crossing.
If you went that way, you'd pick up another lot right there where the street's at, off that cul-de-sac.
But you would, the advantage of picking up the lot would be, would go away with the cost that would bridge this.
Could EDC do any?
The problem with that idea is it doesn't achieve the objectives that the alternative plan were created for, and that is, the layout that we had showed it skirting the residential subdivision entirely, hugging the railroad track, providing additional buffer from the noise, and then coming on up here and sweeping to the right and then intersecting with whatever access road. The only reason this whole issue of this cul-de-sac being in the way and being a bad plan is that it happens to be located where we may ultimately see our frontage road go east and west. And why is that? Because the only place we can run that thing under the railroad tracks is here at the low point, all right? And you couldn't put a street jammed up against the railroad and have it intersect with an east-west road and have safe intersection. You need some distance to get an intersection.
Just a point of clarification, we continue to point at the approved plan, you know, and I keep trying to make that point, but this plan is the plan that exists today in the zoning ordinance that was approved for this project.
Further questions, Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Henderson, Councilmember Fowler, Councilmember Sutton, in that order, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. McGee, was there any comments made on the DRC about that major thoroughfare connecting at any time?
Very early on, there were some comments made about the thoroughfare for West Grove, and that's when we entered into the discussion of whether or not we would agree to put in this culvert crossing and whether we could make this a emergency access or limited access cul-de-sac, but still achieve the ability for police and fire vehicles to cross and get out to eight twenty. So there were, early on, and I don't, unfortunately, I don't have them with me, Councilman, but early on, there was some discussion of that. And again, after, we refer to them as the five plans, after we submitted the five plans, that discussion went away.
Okay, was there comments made about it being a major thoroughfare versus an arterial or?
We had discussions with what would be the appropriate size. I think it was shown as a hundred feet on thoroughfare plan, and we agreed to the sixty-foot width that's shown on the approved plan.
Okay, that's all, Mayor.
Councilmember Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, Mr. Flynn, could you come up for just a minute? I'm trying to figure out, obviously, we have a communication breakdown, because I know that you don't get all the way through the DRC and then come back with earth-shattering changes, you know, we're just completely scrapping plans and doing all that. Mr. Flynn, you alluded to the fact that during this process, and in your defense, and I understand, as, to give you a little bit of an idea, Mr. Flynn's job is to make sure that the development of our, some of our property along with Mr. Plisca, our Planning and Zoning Director, that it's to the highest and best use of not only current use, but what's proposed to be used and utilized in the future. You said at one time, you, obviously, this has gone through our previous staff completely, and it comes up to this point, you said that you were part of this process for a while, and then you were, you were taken out of it or removed. and then you were, you were taken out of it or removed from it?
I was part of the process during the DRC comments. Uh, in May twenty-seventh, the DRC comments were generated, that included a comment about the thoroughfare plan and the fact that this subdivision would have to comply with it. At a later date, the city manager met with KB Holmes and negotiated the plan that you see tonight. Uh, at that point, I was not involved.
And you had made comments to the manager and staff at that time, the necessity of punching this road through, for lack of better terms, in order to future, for future development along the right-of-way, along eight twenty?
I made them aware of the issues of the adjacencies, the properties adjacent, the plans for eight twenty, the likelihood of our lack of having, uh, uh, access on a frontage road that really served the properties unless we intervened, and the need to be flexible and try to preserve our ability to adjust those plans, and therefore, there was a high, uh, highly critical need to be sure and incorporate those concerns in the layout plans for KB's development.
And you don't feel like that any of that's met with this plan?
No.
No fault of KB's?
No, no, I don't have any qualms that KB, uh, didn't work hard and, and tried to cooperate.
Do everything they were supposed to do.
And do everything that they were asked to do, that's, there's no argument there.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out where all the problems are arising, because, you know, I, I just understand that you get to this point, and then you don't just all of a sudden throw your hands up and say, okay, well, we've got a hundred and fifty lot subdivision coming in, but now we're going to change all the roads, we're going to re-engineer, redesign everything. Uh, you know, I, I think if, if, if they were led to believe that, were you, Mr. McGee, if you don't mind, would you step to the podium, were you led to believe by staff that this would be a suitable plan?
Yes, I was, Councilman Fowler. We, in fact, when we went to the Planning and Zoning Commission the first time, we received unanimous approval, and there were no negative comments, and when we went, uh, before the Planning and Zoning Commission, on the thoroughfare plan amendment, what we're considering tonight, Mr. Flynn caught me before the meeting, discussed a little bit with me, but also in public forum, didn't present any comments. So, I, on this plan, yes, I absolutely was led to believe that this plan was acceptable, and it was ultimately approved. As to the thoroughfare plan, as this issue seemed to start arising, you know, we had concerns about it, but then we brought a preliminary plat and the thoroughfare plan amendment before the Planning and Zoning Commission, both were unanimously approved.
Okay.
I might respond to that comment just briefly, in that, uh, the input was late, there's no disagreeing with that, but it was not after the zoning process was completed, it was prior to council's consideration of it, and that was the earliest opportunity I had to, to be involved again in, in the process, and this occurred after the change in the management.
And that was because you were instructed not to be a part of the process?
No, that was, that was on October twenty-seventh, at this, the first reading of the zoning, I mean, the, you know, the zoning case.
Prior to that, you, you were removed from the process?
Prior to that, I was not involved in the process, until, or at least, at least, not after the original DRC comments.
Okay, and let me ask you, Mr. McGee, you'd made, you'd made comment earlier in the meeting that there was no written notice, uh, provided by staff in regards to any changes that might be done or anything, understanding, in defense of Mr. Flynn, you know, we're caught between a rock and a hard place, I mean, this is, this is proposed future development, it's, it's somebody that's here right now that's willing to come in and put a, a nice product on the ground, uh, you know, we're in, we're in a real dilemma right here, and I'm, I'm ashamed to say that it went this far, and, you know, I know from developing property that it typically, this is very abnormal, that it doesn't happen this way, and I'll apologize for that, but I, but were you provided by former staff any written notice of any changes that might need to be done as far as this thoroughfare?
No, I was not. And the, we, I agree with you, Councilman, we, it is unfortunate we're here, I don't want to be here arguing, Mr. Flynn, he's obviously a very nice guy, trying to do a good job. Problem we have is that the zoning was approved, and we, whether or not we ultimately press forward and close on this property is dependent on our plat approval, which is really a ministerial approval in accordance with the zoning, that's a legislative act that's been approved for this property. So, we have modified Mr. Williamson's zoning, and, and it's, it's in ordinance form, and I, you know, I mean, obviously, you could undo that, but our view is, we want to just press forward with a plat that conforms to what was approved, and it's a, it's in that sort of ministerial light, we're here tonight, and we're kind of caught in this problem, but as you point out, well, gee, I, I understand the position you're in, but the process has gone pretty doggone far to get to this point.
Oh, I most definitely agree, it's gone way too far to, you know, to, to, to do that. I'm just as, quite astonished, to, to be frank, that, you know, we have an economic development director, and we're talking about developing property on what very limited property that we do have, that's, uh, possibly, uh, this could, could hamper some of the future development along eight twenty, if we don't have a road through there, but then again, we have, like I say, we have a developer that's willing to come in. I'm just ashamed that, that, you know, our previous staff allowed it to get to that point, that we didn't use some foresight and, and make some better judgments on these things.
If, if I can, let me say something, I mean, there's, there seems to be, and, you know, wanting to assess blame or point of, uh, point of finger, uh, somewhere. You need to point it in my direction. This alternative plan wouldn't have come up unless I considered it and presented it to the council. Um, I thought it had some merit for consideration, I thought, uh, we could work something out with KB, KB elected not to. Mr. Flynn, Mr. Plisca, everybody has performed admirably, I, and the timing stinks, I, I realize that. Uh, but if, there seems to be an inclination to want to point fingers and, and assess blame, it, it falls in my office, and I'll, I'll, I'll accept that, and, but I don't want to get bogged down with pointing, pointing fingers and trying to find out where we went wrong. The, the, the item you have before you is the thoroughfare plan, is whether to revise it or not. I, uh, thought we came up with something else, and, and they're not wanting to do that, and I've got no, uh, really no other reason to, uh, to not present it to y'all for, for approval, that's why it is on your agenda tonight, for, for that. Uh, but again, if, 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 if you're wanting to assess blame or, or point fingers, that's, it, it, I think it needs to fall in my, in my office, this, we are here because of decisions that I've made regarding this thing over the last couple of months, and I accept responsibility for that.
And, and I can most definitely appreciate that, Mr. Muir, and I, I guess, uh, what I'm trying to do is figure out to learn, I'm glad that you caught it, uh, you know, I think it's something that we definitely need to consider, I'm just, I'm just ashamed that we get to the point that we're at, where, you know, we've presented five plans, and we've done all this, and now all of a sudden, we have a developer up here, up here that's ready to move forward, and the council's in the position we're in, so I, I just hope that we've learned from that, in the future, we don't make the same mistake again, which I'm, I'm sure you, you, you won't.
I've, I've learned a little bit from this, yeah.
Okay, well, and like I say, that's, you know, and we're all going to make mistakes, and, and I can appreciate the fact you're willing to accept blame, and I don't think there's necessarily blame to be, to be laid, I just, I think that we've made some mistakes, and there's something that we need to do different, we need to learn from it, and, and hopefully not put ourselves in that position, not from the staff's standpoint, nor the council's.
Anything further, Councilmember Fowler?
No, sir, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor.
And, uh, Councilmember Avery, you had your light on a moment ago?
Uh, that was an accident, Mayor.
Okay, and then Councilmember Williams, and then we'll move on to the next speaker after that.
Okay, I had a question for Wayne, Steve, I, I don't have a question at this time, thank you. Uh, whenever a plat is given, does that, and, and it contradicts the thoroughfare plan that the council had previously approved, does that of necessity change the thoroughfare plan? Or is that a council action at a later time?
Now, what you have before you tonight is the proper procedure, before you approve a preliminary plat that shows a thoroughfare alignment that's different than your master thoroughfare plan, the procedure, the proper procedure is to amend your thoroughfare plan prior to doing that. So the procedure here is, is one actually that we discussed on October twenty-seventh when the zoning came up, because at that point in time, and I had met with, or discussed over the phone with James Plisca, this procedure, when the, when I was first aware of the, the issues on the thoroughfare plan alignment, and I first became involved immediately prior to your October twenty-seventh meeting, that was the first I was aware of the KB Holmes application, and, um, I had discussed with James Plisca the procedures we would need to go through in order to accomplish this development. Uh, so I think your procedure is correct tonight, the public hearing on the amendment of the thoroughfare plan, approval of an amendment, if you're in favor of it, and then approval of the preliminary plat, which would then be in accordance with the thoroughfare plan. And, and if I might, just to set the record straight, and I'd, like Mr. McGee to comment on this if he wants, but, uh, again, my involvement, my first involvement with this was for the October twenty-seventh city council meeting, and, and I do recall a discussion at that meeting of the thoroughfare issues at that time, and as a matter of fact, I asked the city secretary to pull for me the, the minutes from the council vote at that meeting, and I was looking at the minutes that did reflect that the motion was made, subject to the eventual connection of West Grove Boulevard to the eight twenty frontage road in compliance with the existing thoroughfare plan. That was the motion in connection with the approval of the zoning on first reading and the development plan that went with the zoning. And, and I do recall that the issue of, of the access, the thoroughfare access, was an issue to the council, and, uh, we later decided that we could address that at this stage tonight, and that's why we're here. You have zoning in place, you did eventually approve the zoning on second reading, um, because you wanted this project to move forward, and we were trying to work out a compromise on this. Uh, it may be that the compromise won't work, it may be that, uh, what, uh, Mr. Flynn has proposed is not acceptable to KB Holmes, and that's, if that's true, then the council needs to decide again whether or not this development is in the public interest, and if so, you need to amend the thoroughfare plan to allow the development to go through as the developer's requesting. Uh, otherwise, if you feel like the thoroughfare plan is still in the best interest of the, of the city, and if the developer decides he cannot live with that, then he's got some decisions to make on whether he wants to proceed with a different development, or go forward with this one, with, with the access going through. But, um, again, the first step is to amend the thoroughfare plan, because if you don't do that, then, um, what is being proposed on the plat is not in compliance with the thoroughfare plan.
Right, and, and Steve, just before you start talking, it was my understanding at that time with the first reading, that, that the thoroughfare plan would not be amended at that time, but that we'd work out a compromise situation that was mutual beneficial for both of us, and that's why the, uh, a vote went down that first time, is that we could work a compromise that would, would, would be great for, uh, your company, uh, making something that is really beneficial for Haltam City, but yet, uh, also reflected our concerns about wanting that thoroughfare plan to be, uh, not impacted by the development.
Councilman Sutton, I, at the October twenty-seventh meeting, the motion that did ultimately approve this zoning contained the, the language regarding compliance with thoroughfare plan. If you recall the discussion, and I think if you look at the minutes, it was not discussed as part of the discussion of the actual item, then when the motion was made, it frankly, I was sitting in the audience, took me by surprise, because that issue had been discussed extensively in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve this plan. Immediately after that meeting, the next day, I called Mr. Muir, and I told Mr. Muir that we withdraw our request for second reading, because we absolutely could not live with the through street on this property. And what occurred after that, and I, I, I don't recall whether it was just Mr. Muir or Mr. Plisca, and Mr. Muir and I, but what occurred after that was a discussion that for second reading, we would propose the plan as was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, which was with this emergency access connection. So I, I, while I agree with Wayne that it was in the motion, it was not discussed at the meeting, was absolutely a surprise to us, and then on second reading, I, I actually would have withdrawn at that time and spent a lot less money in reliance of this plan at that point.
That, that was, that's somewhat correct, you, at, at the twenty-seventh meeting, the next day, we did talk, um, you expressed your concerns about that issue, and that it was going to deeply affect, uh, the project, um, and we continued to talk, and, and I think that the next meeting, the motion was made to approve it, uh, as it was presented, but at the same time, I think there were some issues, uh, voiced at the time about the concern of the street, and I don't have the minutes in, in front of me here, but I've, I'll, I'll agree somewhat with what, how you recount that, that's, that's accurate.
Councilmember Sutton, any further?
That's all, Mayor, thank you, thank you, Steve.
Mr. Rattory?
Yeah, again, just to, to put everything on the record, I know we're starting to beat some dead horses here, but I, I think it is clear that, uh, the developer has stated from the start that he was concerned, if not completely opposed, to the, the access going through, and, uh, the, the compromise that was discussed came at a late stage, but it was something that was being discussed, and, and I do know, uh, when the council approved the zoning, uh, there was an issue in some council members' minds about whether or not it was appropriate to have a cul-de-sac at that location, and, and I do believe it was discussed, um, at the pre-council, and, and the, the vote that was made on second reading was specifically to allow this to go forward, because the council didn't want to kill the deal at that time, was hoping for a compromise, hoping something could be worked out on the access, that would be a win-win situation for everybody. Where we are right now, you have zoning in place, um, but, uh, this project can't go through unless you're willing to amend the thoroughfare plan and approve the plat, so that's where we are, you've got to weigh the value of this development, um, with the comments the developer has made tonight, versus the value of keeping the thoroughfare plan the way it currently exists, and that's a, that's the council's decision for tonight.
Councilmember Sutton, anything?
One, one more comment, Mayor, if I may, um, also, uh, I, I know, uh, the, the city manager stated that the applicant had requested a continuance on the plat at the previous council meeting, but we're here tonight, and, and there is a requirement that we act on this plat, uh, within a certain period of time, so we've got to have a vote on the plat tonight, unless you have, uh, the agreement from the developer to continue this again in order to work out something.
Let's remember that when we come to item number ten, help us keep on track. Councilmember Williams?
If I can call Mr. Flynn back up here a minute, we'll make a comment on the counselor's black eye, I did not give that to him, and he didn't get it beaten in the heart, so, anybody after the meeting, want to ask him about the deal, it's a pretty good story. Mr. Flynn, we've got ourselves painted in quite a corner here, uh, it looks like we have, uh, told this developer what was required of him, and he's went out and brought the plat to us, and, and the plan, and it's gone through our P and Z, and they've approved it and sent it to us. Now, it's been approved on first reading, is that right? Or is this the first reading on it?
This is the first reading on zoning.
First reading on the zoning, okay.
The zoning's been approved.
Zoning's been approved, and it's...
This is the first hearing on the thoroughfare plan change.
Right, thoroughfare plan, okay, now, we knew at the time, or the city should have known, someone in this building, I'm not going to point a finger at Tom or anybody, I, I think it's we, is, we work as a group, so we get blamed as a group. Uh, somewhere, uh, there was a slip-up, this was approved, we had to have the thoroughfare to go through there, uh, KB Holmes is not comfortable with putting it through there in that form. Uh, I'd asked Mr. McGee earlier, is it be a make or break deal, and he, he sort of told me that they would lean toward breaking the deal, you know, if we went this way. Now, I have some problem that, that we've led him to believe that he was right there at the gate and fixing to come in, and now we've slammed the gate in his face. Uh, so I guess I'm going to ask you and the city manager, both, your recommendation on this, because regardless of how we did it, if we approved to do it, then we done wrong, because we'll have to amend the plan, if we disapprove it, we done wrong, because we, we told them to do it, and now we're not, so get us out of this corner.
Get you out, huh? Well, that was basically, uh, our attempt by, uh, drafting this draft plan to try to solve the, the problems that, that we had as far as economic development impact. It's certainly up to KB whether they want to try to work with this and, and work out a solution or not, but as far as my responsibilities to the city, uh, my comments are generated from the, the aspect of looking at economic development and the impact on that, and there's other department heads that make comments based on their sphere of influence, all right? A development's reviewed based on all of those issues. Uh, it wouldn't be, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't speak to the economic development issues. My, that's why I brought this up as far as trying to provoke, propose a compromise. My recommendation is that the thoroughfare plan needs to be carefully studied prior to making a revision in this part of town.
Time period.
Uh, and immediately. Immediately, in the next few months, next several months, to understand what our prospects are with regard to what this West Grove Boulevard could do for us or not do for us, and eliminate any possible situation where we would be changing the plan based on this one single-family development and then regretting it later.
Okay, I guess my next question would be, throw out KB Holmes, throw out anything. Mr. Williams, Williamson, he's here tonight. He still owns the property as of tonight. If we don't, if KB Holmes doesn't build that, and they decide to develop something else, can they develop something in there and refuse a road through their period to us?
My understanding is any development plat has to conform to the thoroughfare plan.
Okay. And Mr. Muir, your words of wisdom.
I would, I would concur with Mr. Flynn in that it does need to be studied, but I think, given the circumstances of the situation, I mean, we've, as I've stated, I don't know how many times tonight, I mean, I've tried to come up with an alternate plan for them to consider, and they've, and they've got their reasons for not wanting to do it. And I understand and respect those. I've presented it here tonight for y'all's approval for further consideration. Ultimately, if I would like them to consider it, I'd like them to take some more time with it, to look at it. That's not going to happen. So barring that, you know, I'm presenting it to you as a way for us to move on. But I mean, I do concur with Mr. Flynn. I mean, it does need, does need studying.
Okay, then Mr. McGee, you'll be last.
Okay, one more comment, unless you have another question or two following that, and then we're going to move on once Councilmember Williams is finished with Mr. Williamson.
Mr. McGee, I know we've got ourselves in a situation here that's not pleasing for either one of us. And I know that they've already told you, you could do this, and now it's kind of like, you can, and you can't, and you can, and you can't. Would you be willing to go back to the table with us two weeks to the next meeting? Is that right? Would you be willing to forego those two weeks and try to work something out? Or do you want to stay hard-nosed, or what do you want to do?
No, I'm not a hard guy.
That's a good face you had for a thought.
Truthfully, Wayne and I didn't get in any kind of contest here.
Yeah. Here's your bet.
Councilman Williams, I think, and I'll give you your answer, I got to just make one little comment. You know, we do want to solve the problem. We didn't want to create a problem. And we felt like we tried to come to a compromise and work through the city. And I know, you know all the reasons, and you've articulately pointed them out. We're at this juncture, two more weeks, will it kill us after we've been here for six months? No. What hurts us is the, if Mr. Muir and I sat down, probably we could work this out in an afternoon if we mutually had input into the plan. What we didn't want to have done is have a alternate plan dictated to us that we had no input in. So I am willing to do it, to go two more weeks, and I guess we could just table this item for two more weeks, and Wayne will ask me to voluntarily table the plat as well. I'm willing to do that for two weeks, because I think if Mr. Muir and I put our heads together, we can come up with something that'll work.
Do you feel like you could come up with Plan Six?
We will. We will come up with Plan Six.
Then I'm ready to make a motion whenever the matter.
It's still a public hearing. I'll get back with you just in a moment. Thank you, Councilmember Williams. In just a moment, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Williamson, I believe is the property owner. He had filled out a request card, and then you'll be next, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Williamson, if you'll give us your name, and we do need your address for the record. I don't have an address here, all I have is a telephone number.
Yes, sir. I'm Stephen Williamson. My address is P.O. Box 190746, Dallas, 75219. As you stated, I'm the owner of the property, and several things going on in my mind here as I'm going through the meeting. One, I want to commend the staff. For several years, I have visited with the staff, worked with them concerning an apartment development there. We've explored exactly what I could do with the property. We've had numerous discussions about the single-family, and they've been unfailingly courteous. I appreciate that and thank them. Secondly, it's certainly been stated enough times that this property previously was zoned multifamily, and the zoning request to single-family was presented to you with the stipulation that the property would revert to multifamily if this plat was not approved. And certainly, I sincerely appreciate your sense of fair play in holding to that and your willingness to return the multifamily zoning to me. Not many cities would just straight up say, yes, we'll do that. And I appreciate that very much. Most cities would choose the single-family over multifamily. But you gentlemen are men of your word and ladies of your word, and I appreciate that. One problem I do have is that I have an apartment, KB Holmes has until Friday to buy this property, and I have a multifamily developer ready to go under contract at an appreciably higher number. The status of that is well-understood. Multifamily zoning is clearly worth more than single-family. The attractiveness to me of KB Holmes' offer was more along the lines of a bird in the hand. And anyway, they have until Friday to close on the property. And again, I want to tell you that I do appreciate your willingness to hold to your word on the multifamily zoning. That's about all I have. Thank you.
Members of the council, any questions or comments for Mr. Williamson?
Truly.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Thompson indicated a moment ago he would like to, thank you, Mr. Williamson. Okay. And any other member of the audience who wishes will have an opportunity at this time to address the issue of whether we ought to or not amend the thoroughfare plan for Haltam City. Mr. Thompson, give us your name and address for the record.
I had no idea this was a public hearing. All right, I've been getting good. I personally, as a taxpayer here, would have to agree with him that when you take that railroad and you take the apartments, it would be not necessarily the best piece of property in the world to develop with anything. And I, as a taxpayer, prefer single-family homes there versus the multifamily. I think that the 115 homes, as it's been laid out, it's gone to the Planning and Zoning Board. It's been before you once. I mean, we're talking about just the thoroughfare plan, and to me, a plan is a plan. It doesn't mean it's written in stone. You can change it. And I think a lot of what we've had to sit through out here, and y'all got to keep, y'all got to remember, five of y'all will be on recall. So you don't have to be nice anymore. So what I'm saying is, you're wanting to admonish the mayor for meeting with them privately, that's number one. And number two, you're wanting to point out that Torres wasn't doing his job, which we all know he's gone too. And I can handle and live with all of that. The main thing is to do what we said we would do with this guy right here, and the Planning and Zoning Board said yes, y'all said yes, amend the plan, let the man move on with his plan. I live a half a mile from there, and I hear the railroad all the time. It doesn't bother me. At the same time, I'm thinking, well, Lord, those homes on Stanley Keller have been there for the last 40 years, and that didn't hamper anything. So I mean, it's not who's to say that four homes next to a railroad track's going to keep them from selling. First off, they're not asking y'all to sell them anyway. They're just asking you for zoning and an amendment. And I personally, as I think most of us would be, are in favor of that. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, if you will, give us your name and address for the record.
It's Cody Thompson, 5717 Cedar Crest, Haltam City.
Okay, now, if anyone wanted to applaud what he said, please go ahead. Okay. Yes, sir. This gentleman here had indicated he would like to, and we do need your name and address for the record, and you two have five minutes maximum, please.
Mayor White, my name is Tommy Kline, member of the council. I live at 12311 Marbrook in Dallas, Texas. I've been in the real estate business since 1974. Been doing subdivisions exclusively since about '92. I tried to wrestle this property three years ago. Took it to your informal DRC. For a private developer, there ain't enough room for us to go out there and do it, build it. And now, as I understand it, your fees have gone up on your houses, so that even makes it a little tighter. But, you know, if you delay it two more weeks, is there something to say something else? You make a decision with the best information you have at the time. If I'm correct, this was discussed. And the way I've always heard a PD is you have a preliminary concept site plan, and you can pretty well go to the bank on it, that if you bring this plan in on your PD, it'll be approved. And you go through the process of DRC. You get your comments, you work those comments, you clean them up, you bring, come back. I mean, and I'm not even sure how the road's supposed, that Mr. Flynn wants it to come in there, but it's a little late in the game. I mean, in your statement up there, responsible, capable, and in efficient manner, I mean, I'm not trying to, but give this guy a chance. He wants to put a nice subdivision in your town, and he's reducing the density at least by half. I mean, it'll be, I think it'll be a nice thing to your, a nice addition to your community. I would respectfully ask the council to respectfully vote yes on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Mr. Lewis, your name and address for the record, please, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Jake Lewis. I live in the area, and I travel that area a lot. And as one of the gentlemen said, the multifamily units, we have enough, and we have an opportunity. In fact, the council has already approved this. The zoning board has already approved it, and now for some reason, everything's on hold. I would prefer single-family units there. I think the city would benefit, and as a taxpayer, as a homeowner in the area, I'd like to see it go to single-family, as has been approved here.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in this public hearing regarding the thoroughfare And we do need your name and address for the record, please.
Mayor White, Cynthia Davidson at 4605 Viskan Drive. I came here with my scouts tonight to hear the council. And I want to commend you. I know you all have a difficult job, but I do want to say, as a small business owner, I think it's bad business to go into, you know, leading this company, and, you know, they've come to Haltam City to bring a tax base and support to our city. They're offering you a plan, and now we're, like I say, closing the gate in their face. I would prefer single-family over, I just want to say, you know, watch your steps, be efficient, and get your ducks in a row next time before you go into something like this. I think it's bad business is that if we shut the door on this and KB leaves, I think word's going to get out to developers, you know? Look what a hassle I went through with Haltam City. I don't want to go there. So I think we need to take that into consideration. Our reputation has not been the greatest lately, so keep that in mind.
Hang on just a moment, if you would. Councilmember Williams, light is on, and he may have a question or comment for you.
I'd just like for the record, for the city manager, to point out whether this is the council's fault whatsoever. It's going that way, so I want to clarify that for the headlines in the morning.
No, sir, it is not the council's fault. Thank you.
I'm not trying, I'm not trying to particularly point fingers, I'm just saying, overall, for the city, we need to maintain a good reputation, and we want to attract businesses to Haltam City, okay? We don't want to run them off by not doing our job properly as a city government, okay?
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Okay, there being none, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll move to the corresponding ordinance. Councilmember Williams, I believe a moment ago you said you were ready to move forward with this.
I would draw my motion that I was going to make.
Okay.
Apparently, some of the people here aren't going to be, I mean, there's a, I'll just take two minutes of your time or less. There's a very big picture here. There's a big piece of property that's up next to this piece of property, and it's going to be a lifeline to Haltam City. We own the property now. The property's set on the tax basis for probably 10, 15 years, not drawing any taxes at all. This road cutting through here is going to be very detrimental to this piece of property that we have acquired. And so that's the reason that I think Mr. Flynn will agree with me, that the importance of wanting to do this, I guess you can put the blame on the council. This was something that, and Mr. Muir, I'm not going to put it on you, because this happened back before you were the city manager. This should have been caught back then, should have been addressed at that time. I like Mr. Fowler, and I'm ashamed that it's got to this point. Ms. Davidson, she's my next-door neighbor, I agree with her, that, you know, it could send out a bad signal to other developers. I don't know what we've sent out good in the last three or four months. Every time I pick up a piece of paper or read an email, there's nothing positive on it. But I know that Mr. Flynn is working very hard to do his job. He's very dedicated. He's done a very good job for us. This road going through, if it's not put through right, it's going to be detrimental to the property going all the way over to Beach Street. And there's a lot of, a lot of things that's not surfaced here. 820 is going to be changed. I think Mr. Flynn set five lanes each way. The diamond shape is going to be taken out at Beach, you won't be able to get on and off at Beach. You'll get off at Anderson. You won't be able to get back on until Denton Highway. And takes, does it take Hawthorne Road out too, Mr. Flynn? Takes Hawthorne Road off the access to 820. So this is a very important road that's going through there, and that's the reason I was going to vote to table it, make the motion to table it, but I'll withdraw that, and I'll listen to council's visions on it.
Councilmember Fowler?
Okay. Mr. Williamson, is there any way at all you can ask, or we could ask you to extend your deadline on KB's possible purchase of this property until after the next, the Tuesday following the next council meeting? I understand, I hate to put you in a position, but, I mean, it's, that's a lot of the problem with government. We're not allowed or not given the opportunity to explain a lot of things that go on and what hinges on things, and you understand that as a property owner. We would like KB to be here. I would just like to see if there's any compromise, any area for compromise between these two gentlemen. And we have to do what's in the best interest for the city. Now, you may, we may sit out here in the audience tonight and say, no, that's not the best interest. We want them right now. Well, we would like them right now also, but then again, in 10 years, we'd be remiss as the council when 820 goes, and all the access roads are shut off, and then all of a sudden, we've got a huge piece of commercial property there that's not worth anything because we don't have access to it. You know, we wouldn't be fair to our citizens in the future if we made that decision.
Mr. Stevenson, we need you to come back to the, Williamson, correct. Apologize. Mr. Williamson, do need you to come back to the speaker's stand so we can all hear you in.
Cause me a lot worse than Mr. Stevenson. Let's see. But aren't we really, we're not really looking at a week or two? Aren't we really looking at another six-month period to, what do we do at the end of two weeks that we get KB Holmes comfortable enough to buy the property?
Hopefully, these two gentlemen will be able to get together in the next two weeks and see if there's something that's amenable between both parties.
But, yes, sir, I understand that, but then KB has to go back, generate another plat, do engineering work, and go back through that process, do they not?
Somewhat, I believe some of, Mr. Flynn's brought, proposed some things that...
I mean, I, we're not, you see, KB cannot close...
Does the property purchase predicated on whether or not, is it this plan, or is it, if you can?
The property, yes, sir, it's based on them... The, the property, yes, sir, it's based on them getting this plan approved. And, and they, they will not close without that. And what they are looking at is, I mean, a two-week period, that's one thing, but I think what KB is actually looking at is, is probably several months to generate another plat, go back through the process, get that, if indeed they're able to compromise, and get that approved through the, through the city processes. And perhaps at that point, they would be willing to close. I very much wish it were a two-week process, but it just doesn't work that way.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have moved now to the corresponding ordinance regarding the public hearing that we've been involved in for the last hour and a half, and I'm ready to receive a motion regarding the, what the council wishes to do. And the issue before us is, on item number nine, is do we wish to change or to amend the 2002 Haltam City thoroughfare plan for West Grove Boulevard from a proposed minor arterial to a proposed 60-foot right-of-way collector? What is the wish of the council? Mr., yes, Councilmember Williams, I was about to ask the attorney a question, what happens if we don't have a motion, but you have the floor.
I just, if the recall comes, it just gets down to two people. We'll never have a motion. Kent, I hate to do this to you, buddy, but let's let them, let's let them work their way out of it. I make a motion, we approve his plat, move the thoroughfare. Make a motion, we approve it, and in the words of Jack Lewis, you all work around it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Now, actually, that's item number 10. We probably need to take action on those separately, Mr. Attorney.
Yeah, I think, as I understood, Councilmember Williams, your motion is to approve the revision to the master thoroughfare plan. Is that correct, on first reading?
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Councilmember Sutton, your light is on.
I've, I've listened, and I really, I'm looking 10 years down the road, and I see that, in a sense, we have tremendous potential in this area. And I'm an engineer, and I know what it's like to get changes at the last minute. It can be extremely costly. That's why the Air Force doesn't do it to us too often, but they do do it to us sometimes. In this case, we have a plan here that, that is a plan that's going to put a good quality product in Haltam City. And I understand that we are between a rock and a hard place right here, very, very difficult. And I really look down the road and see that this could be something very, very good if we could get this thoroughfare in there, but it just doesn't seem like this is going to work out with this situation. So I feel like I'm going to go ahead and second John's motion to do this, with apologies to Kent, because Kent has some great dreams for this area up there, and I share those dreams with him, and I'm hoping that there's some way that we can work in the next five, six years, on or off the council, the council doesn't matter, but to get the right commercial development up in that area some way, somehow, because I think that we're mortgaging our future in Haltam City if we don't do something with that corridor up there. And maybe we can work with KB in doing that somehow, but I'm going to second the motion for John.
So I have a motion and a second on item number nine to amend this ordinance, or to amend this thoroughfare plan as presented. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Okay, if you will, if you will register your vote, I will display it at this time. And city secretary, will you... Let's give the city secretary just a moment. Looks like the mayor may have an opportunity to vote. Okay, the mayor votes in favor of the motion, so the motion passes. Okay, we're ready now for item 10, and after item 10, we still have some items on the agenda. I, we'll call for a recess, and then we'll continue on with the agenda. Item number 10, Mr. Muir?
Mayor and council, I have, item number 10 is the consideration and action regarding the application of Mr. McGee and KB homes for the preliminary plat of lots 1 through 21 Block A, lots 1 through 33 Block B, and lots 1 through 11 Block C, lots 1 through 14 Block D, and lots 1 through 21 Block E, and lots 1 through 15 Block F. Spring Lake Park Edition being a replant of lots 1 through 3 Block 1, and lots 5 through 7 Block 2. Spring Lake Park Edition containing approximately 24.76 acres of land located in the area surrounded by the Texas and Pacific Railroad tracks and proposed West Grove Boulevard just south of Loop 820, located in the 5100 Block of Spring Lake Parkway, 5000 Block of Haltam Road, and the 5200 Block of proposed West Grove Boulevard. I believe the discussions that we've had over the last hour and 20, hour and 30 minutes, I have covered a lot of what this is. If there is any more discussion or questions, if you have a staff, we'll certainly respond to them.
Okay, I'm, because of the discussion we have had, I'm ready to entertain a motion, if that's the pleasure of the council. Councilmember Williams, your light came on a split second ahead of Councilmember Fowler's.
I'm a little faster than Oaktree. I was a little disappointed I didn't get any applause while I go when I made that motion. So I'll approve, make a motion, approve plat number P dash 020 dash 03.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Councilmember Fowler, your light was on. Did you turn it off?
No, sir, I just, I turned it off just for courtesy of you. No, I was just going to make sure, is that the one you're talking about? Just wanted to make sure.
You hold it up again?
Thank you, Mr. McGee.
So that was for a second?
No, sir, I'm not abstaining.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to approve this plat. Do we have a second? Councilmember Avery?
Mayor, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve this plat. Councilmember Bronson?
Uh, what, are we not going to wait, we can't wait two weeks, can we, because of the other...
We didn't do that.
It was just a thought.
Uh, any further discussion on the motion? Okay, if you will, register your vote, and I will display it at this time, the motion to approve the plat. And the motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, let's take a 10-minute break, and stay put. Just a moment. Mr. McGee, you want to say something?
I just wanted to say thank you to the city, and thank you for your patience in hashing through what has really been a tough issue, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
10-minute break, we'll be back at 9:30. I don't need to, just as they come up, if you'll hand them to me.
We're ready. I'm ready.
Looks like we need a city manager and an attorney.
I thought we hired a city manager. You know.
I think we'll go ahead and get started without the city attorney being here. We move to item number 11 now, and that's resignation of board members, members of the council. Do we have any resignations? Okay, there being none, do we have any appointments?
I have a couple.
Okay, there are not any appointments. We come now to the visitor citizens forum, and the city secretary, I believe, has five cards that have been filled out, and I need to do this disclaimer regarding the visitor citizens forum. This time has been set aside for any person having business before the council that is not scheduled on the agenda to have an opportunity to speak to the council. And we have these five cards that have been submitted, and I want to remind the speakers that all comments must be directed toward the mayor rather than to an individual council member or staff, and each speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter listed on the speaker's request form, and must refrain from personal attacks toward any individual. And tonight, a five-minute time limit will be granted, and council cannot discuss or debate any issue brought forth at this time, since this was not a posted agenda item in accordance with the open meetings law. Our first speaker tonight, Mr. Oscar Garcia, who wishes to speak on the tax freeze, and Mr. Garcia, we need your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. I want to thank Mayor White and the rest of the council for allowing me to testify in favor of the tax freeze on the disabled and seniors 65 and older. My name is Oscar Garcia. I live in Fort Worth, and I'm a member of the Texas Silver Hair Legislature representing Tarrant County. I also serve on the Tarrant County Commission on Aging, the Board of Directors of Senior Citizen Services, the Advisory Council of the Area Agency on Aging, and the Senior Impact Council of the United Way of Metropolitan Tarrant County. By now, we have heard most of the arguments pro and con on the subject, so I won't bore you with having to recite them again. There are five points I want to leave you with before you decide to freeze the tax. First, people talk about tax frees applying to only a select few individuals, while in point of fact, everyone, that is, everyone, provided they live long enough, will benefit from the tax free in due time. We're all going to be 65 unless we die too young, so this is a moving target. Everybody will get the benefit eventually. Secondly, even though the school tax has been frozen since 1978, you will notice by the chart attached to these comments that in the last five years, the school tax revenue to the city has gone up by 73.14 percent. The revenues to the city on the ad valorem tax freeze will also continue to increase, not decrease, just like the school tax revenue has continued to increase and for the same reasons. There will be increases in revenue every year, although at a slower rate of increase. Number three, if my numbers are anywhere close, the city budget is approximately $20 million, and staff has projected a loss in revenue for the year 2005 of $60,000 if this freeze takes effect. Folks, this is only three-tenths of 1 percent of the budget, hardly a significant amount. Families, small businesses, and large corporations have had to deal with 5 percent, 10 percent, 15 percent, and more of actual, not projected losses and survived. I'm sure that this competent council can easily deal with this matter. Fourth, the truth of the matter is that if you break down the city budget and analyze its component revenues, the revenue from senior and disabled home states is infinitesimal when compared to the total city budget. And finally, everyone is already taxed too much, so when the city can reduce the tax burden on anyone, especially the disabled and the elderly, who are least able to support increases in prescription drugs, health care, housing and transportation costs, in addition to the ever-increasing taxes, it is a good and the right thing to do. I respectfully request that council give this matter their utmost consideration and grant our seniors this tax relief, who, by the way, are in dire need of our help. I thank Mayor White, Councilmember Diane Bronson, Bronson, and the rest of the council for allowing me to testify in favor of granting our seniors this tax relief, and will try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor White.
Our next speaker is Jack Lewis, wishing to speak on senior matters, and Mr. Lewis, if you'll give us your name and address for the record, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Jack Lewis. I reside at 4600 Sable here in Haltam City. In Saturday's Star Telegram, I read where Bedford may again postpone the subject of tax relief on the elderly. They again say we need to study it. We need to get the attorney general's opinion. I say boo. They passed it on the first reading, same as Haltam City did, and at least they intend to discuss it again tomorrow night, as they promised on the first reading last year. Now, five of the councilmen sitting here tonight did not even have the courtesy to place it on the agenda as they stated in their motion last year that it would be decided on second reading the first of the year. Well, this is the first of the year. This gentleman here come, you heard the figures. Now, it was accepted unanimously by the Silver Hair Legislature a year and a half ago. This fellow here talks about six months, got everything approved, and then all of a sudden, it's a stop. He is better off than we are. It not only stopped, you didn't even put it on the agenda, and I'd like to know why. All right, after the Silver Hair Legislature went to the House of Representatives, they passed it. It went to the Senate, they passed it. It went to the governor, he signed it. It went to the people of Texas. They passed it by 81 percent throughout Texas. The people of Haltam City, not just seniors, the voters of Haltam City passed it by 92 percent. Folks, that's a mandate. Okay, now, five of this council did not even put it on the agenda to vote on the second reading to make it official, again. Why? Now, that's on the, the thing that's not on the agenda tonight, it should be. So I'll leave that and go to another elderly situation. I have, in recent days, been in this city hall asking for applications to vote by mail. Several people I know who are elderly and unable at times, especially in bad weather, to drive, they want to vote. I have been told by officials in this city hall, they're on order, and they're told they don't have to give them to me. That's what I was told. I was even given page 1644 of the election law manual, which does state, the city secretary does not have to furnish these forms in large numbers for distribution. I agree with that, but let's read the rest of the same page, not just one verse. The intent is right in the law book. It also says it is lawful for any person to distribute bank application forms to voters. It also states the information required for those who request the ballots that are elderly or handicapped. It says the city secretary should advise requesters that application forms will not be accepted unless the name, office, or official title and official mailing address of the early voting clerk are stamped or pre-printed on the forms as addresses. Now, I wrote that down before I received another. The last time I came in to ask, one time that I came in to ask for these applications for our elderly, the, I was told that they didn't have to give them to me, and they gave me a page out of the law book, and I read it. Okay, this morning, I was given another page. Now, this one, it was changed. Now, that is not the question. The point is, people need to vote, they need to have, they need to be encouraged to vote. And when we come here, and I have, this morning, in fact, I came in, they said, well, you can download it on the computer, you can go to the secretary of the state, the election is here in Haltam City. They have a form, and I was told this cost us money. Well, I'll tell you what, we spent $341,000 last year on legal fees, and these little two pages, it's a two, it's a hard... pages, it's a two, it's a hard card with a place to stamp, there's about three places to check. Now, that's simple with the address stamped on it. Older people that we go to and talk with and try to help.
Mr. Lewis, you're at 4:30. Have 30 seconds to complete, please.
Okay. So what I think we should do, now, I was given today five sheets of paper that they did download for me. Now, you've got to put that in an envelope, and the people, they can't sometimes see. They have, I saw a magnifying glass. Cost $850 prescription for a lady to see, even to write a bill.
Mr. Lewis, your time, your time is expired.
Thank you. Case closed.
Our next speaker is Ray Eklund. Mr. Eklund, if you'll come forward. Uh, okay. Uh, Mr. Eklund, if you will, hold it just a moment, and Mr. Avery, or Councilmember Avery?
Yes, Sir Mayor. I just have one quick question for our city secretary for more of a clarification. Could you count for me the number of elected officials sitting up here?
Councilmember Avery, there are seven. I mean, eight counting the mayor.
Okay, well, Mr. Lewis kept saying there's five of us. I thought maybe, you know, that's the new math, I don't know.
If I could, I need from the attorney, we cannot comment, discuss items that are brought forth.
That was a clarification, Mayor.
No, we're not.
I hope we haven't started his time yet.
Could you comment on the responsibility the council has regarding, uh...
Under the visitor citizens forum, again, as a clarification and for the audience, as much as anything, one of the reasons why council members can't comment on subjects that are discussed under visitor citizens forum is because they're not posted on an agenda 72 hours in advance, and it would be improper for the city council to take action on an item without giving proper notice to the public of the subject matter of that action. So our recommendation is on visitors and citizens forum that unless you're giving a response that is factual in nature or recitation of city policy, that you not respond to any comments that are brought forward by citizens that have not been posted 72 hours in advance.
Would my comment that there are eight of us currently sitting up here, would that be factual in nature? Would that be appropriate reply?
It's factual.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Eklund. If you will, give us your name and address for the record. You wish to speak on the subject of tax freeze, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ray Eklund. I live at 2532 Oakwood Terrace. It's very important to me, and has been for a long time, that everyone gets to hear both sides of the issue. And when I saw Mr. Garcia and Mr. Lewis were going to speak this evening, I wanted to make sure that everyone, the council, the people at home, and the people who watch on cable or on the computer, have an opportunity to hear both sides of the story. Mr. Garcia listed a number of things that he was a member of, and he represents himself as a past elected official, and so does Mr. Lewis, of the Silver Hair Legislature, which is, by the way, not elected by the public. I don't know how they represent themselves. However, there is no lobby group for the average, everyday, working, middle-class family out here. Okay? We don't have a special interest group for people that punch a clock in the morning and try to go home at night. Okay? There's been a discussion about dire need, okay? We're talking about the seniors, and we're talking about this dire need, but unfortunately, the senior freeze, as we discussed our last visit with the graphs that I brought to you, show you that this policy, this tax policy, will actually benefit the wealthy landowner greatly at the expense of the average working small family that's trying to make their way up, and does absolutely nothing for the poor who don't happen to own their own home. Okay? This is an illusion of poverty. You know, I had an opportunity to travel out west this summer. I went past Lake Havasu. I never saw so many RVs, and I didn't see a whole stack of young families out there in those RVs. Those are $100,000 apiece. I don't have one. Right? These families live from paycheck to paycheck. The bankruptcies are in the public record. They're down at the courthouse every first Tuesday, if you want to go down there, and you can buy a house that's just went through bankruptcy. From a working family who lost their job, their job went overseas, it went somewhere else, it was downsized, okay? And they're trying to make ends meet, raise a family, and this does absolutely nothing to help those people. Tonight, a young couple came here that I know, and they're on their way up. Okay, they're young, they're wanting to buy a house, and they're going to move their way into the city, right? And this will do absolutely nothing to them. In fact, the numbers that were presented said 3%, 0.3%. That's the numbers we were told, $20 million. Well, I think it's misinterpretation, based on Fran's nice calendar here. The property tax base is about $4,007,000, okay? When you take the average loss that we talk about of $125,000, I'm not talking about next year. We're here for the long term. Y'all are, the city's here for the long term. We need to look to the future. So let's not talk about 2005. Let's talk about the next five years, and the next 10 years, the next 15. Because when this law passes, you cannot undo it, okay? So those numbers will be lost, and they're going to get bigger every year. When you do the math, my little handy calculator that I carry with me, okay? $4 million, right, divided by 125,000 is about 3%. So that's what you're actually going to start losing real quick, right? That's, 125 represents what? Two or three police officers, two or three firemen? Yeah, we talked about that before. Raising families is expensive, being elderly and paying for your medicines is expensive. Try buying insurance for a teenager, or two. Try getting ready for college for a couple of kids, right? It's an expensive process. If you want to help out your citizens, make sure you don't end up increasing their tax liability, because you want, you have to make up these lost revenues on the other side. You know, I don't think that's a good policy, right? The seniors have access to those funds. This chart, I love charts, you guys know that, okay? This is a fine chart. Taking these chart numbers that were provided this evening, uh, your home's your best investment. They made 6% based on these numbers from 98 to 2003 per year on the house. Didn't have to do anything to it, made 6% a year, plus had the benefit of a roof over their head. And that's why we all own property. That's why we, that's why America's a great place, right? Because we gained 6%. And now they say they don't want to pay on this gain, okay? They don't want to pay the difference, they say $105 on here. If we'd stayed at the same tax rate, now unfortunately, we went from 46 cents a hundred to 52 cents a hundred. But when you do the math, if you back things up and say if we stayed at 46, what would the increase be? Okay? Well, it wouldn't be very much at all. So the, if you can't afford, if you don't want to pay $105 a year for the services that this city provides, the police, the fire, the streets, the library, you know, all the staff that we have to help us, okay? I think it's a bargain at $105. I think it's a bargain if it goes up 5% a year. That's why we buy property.
Mr. Eklund, you're 4:30.
I want to let you know that some Bedford resident called me after the last meeting and thanked me for speaking out. I think this is a silent majority out here, because we have no organized, Silver Hair Legislature is the best name I could ever think of for a group, right? It's a great name. The average working guy doesn't have that organization. I would like for y'all to consider this, and I'm sorry we had to bring it up again tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Eklund. Our next speaker, Mr. Cody Thompson. He wishes to speak on the subject of the Three Stooges. So, Mr. Thompson, if you'll give us your name and address for the record, you have five minutes.
It depends on how you count. Cody Thompson, 5717 Cedar Crest, Holton City, 76117. "The Three Stooges. The current mayor we have has done nothing but cause dissension, confusion, chaos, and in spite of his claims, taken the position of mayor down to an all-time low. For example, the majority of the council does not now nor will in all probability have any respect for the current mayor, and why should they? He attended the recall election signings only to keep an eye, only to keep up with what the community thinks. That's like your daughter coming home and saying not to worry, she's just a little bit pregnant. Mass confusion during meetings can only be blamed on the lack of leadership and direction that the mayor does not provide. The female stooge on the end down there has on numerous occasions asked, now, before we vote, I need to know if no means no, and if yes means yes. What the hell? You'd think at least the like-minded stooges would think alike, how about the way it used to be? You vote on a motion or an amended motion, and if that didn't make it, then someone else made another motion until some action was taken or passed. And you don't have the umpteen motions and substitute motions on the floor, so someone would have to ask dumb questions like that. The mayor, when singled out for the cowardly acts, doesn't want to stand alone, oh, no. What about the other stooges at the petition signing? It's unfair, it's unfair for you to single me out and not get him. Sounds like loyalty. And oh, you can pass as many resolutions as you want to, council. You already resolve anything and everything else. Why can't you resolve that the mayor's a hill? A resolution is not law, it is opinion, and that's all. I'm amazed that all of you look to an attorney and ask questions like that. And as for selective enforcement, Mayor, it happens all throughout life. The government even provides selective enforcement grants to police departments. For example, working certain areas for speeding, all speeders not getting tickets is the same thing as selective enforcement. Some get tickets, some are lucky and do not. But go ahead and throw your guy stooge under the bus with you, misery loves company. At the rate the current mayor is going, he's going down in true Holton City history with other negative, do-nothing, lackluster aginer mayors like Larson, Lewis, and what a dynamic legacy to follow. Here's the scariest scenario I can think of for anyone in Holton City. The entire city represented by the Three Stooges, if the recall is successful. That would represent democracy at its finest. I don't think so. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Our next speaker is Mr. Bill Jornay. Mr. Jornay wishes to speak on public concern about city government. If you will, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Bill Jornay. I live at 4529 Nadine, and what I have to say is not necessarily my opinion, but others as well, in and out of Holton City, about voting, city governments, and in general. Have you visited a military base lately? Did you notice how clean and orderly things were on base? Around the base, there are trash receptacles, constantly and properly used, and always clean. You drive the posted speed limit on base. You don't run stop signs, nor will you hear of road rage, traffic fatalities at all. It just isn't being done. Can you guess why? At Big Ben National Park, for instance, the top speed limit there is 45 miles another, an hour. Other parks have reduced speed limits to 10, 15 miles an hour. This is to protect the wildlife, like deer and ducks, not children and folks, of course. Of course, these places are known for order and discipline, and well-enforce their laws to the letter. However, off-base, we are free to behave like the reality TV shows, pretty much as we please, or even worse. Have you ever wondered why? Do you recognize the extreme difference between, difference in social behavior of off and on base, in and out of the national park? Seems the nearest we can come to order and discipline is the insurance companies, justice, and our government's controlled environments and instituted programs. But don't blame our police departments. It's not their fault. And no, the public doesn't demand this behavior, nor did we vote for it. No one appreciates dangerous neighborhoods, especially after dark. I certainly didn't vote for this, did you? We didn't vote against it either, did we? Hmm. Let's put two and two together and try not to come up with a politically correct seven. Why do you suppose the insurance companies dictate so many of our laws? So much so that our traffic laws are unenforceable? So are our gun laws. Why do you suppose insurance has more say about traffic courts? Or who do you suppose gave them the right to determine right and wrong when we all know that insurance is going to favor its own financial advantage? What kind of justice is this? Who voted for this? Certainly not me. Why do we insultingly have police officers at every school, yet we are hard-pressed to have social discipline in our streets, parks, and neighborhoods, like once upon a safer time? Who voted for all this? Adverse behavior. Well, it just happened, didn't it? Did it? It had nothing to do with votes. I'm thinking that insurance and health care, as we know it today, were wooing our politicians when our backs were turned, when we thought we were safe. What a field day they have had at our expense. Property taxes and insurance have gone through the roof with no excuse or help from government. We pay more insurance than we do for some of our cars with no help from government, except to enforce the mandatory insurance laws. But can you explain the price of health care for putting an officer in harm's way? Or, or who exactly is insuring that officer at our expense? No, let's not blame our police. But is it any wonder that we've, we vie for any and compromise our precious freedoms for only a tad of safety in the form of rec centers, senior centers, after-school programs, et cetera, et cetera? This, rather than our free enterprise system that might put business on our streets, maybe even an all-night restaurant with...
Mr. Jornay, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you.
You're at 4:30.
It is a known fact, auto insurance cannot raise their rates without boasting of tragedies and fatalities, and how they harp on our young people. They thrive and prosper on it. Yet the city government tells us we must police ourselves, or at least try to protect ourselves from ourselves. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jornay. These are all of the ones who had submitted speaker request forms, and we move now to item 13, which is attendance requirements. And since all elected officials are here, there's no need for any action there. With that, the council will move at this time into closed session as authorized by the government code section 551.071, .072, and .074, and will return to open session to take any action necessary resulting from executive session. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the time is 12:33. The council is back in open session following executive session. There being no action to be taken on any item discussed in executive session tonight. All other items having been covered, we stand adjourned.